Yes.
We're live.
Okay, thank you. Okay, okay. Okay, good morning, everyone, and thank you for joining us this morning. Welcome to City Hall. I'd like to call this meeting to order, and our invocation will be given by Rabbi Neftoli Schmuckler. Thank you. With Shabbat coastal bend. Yes, Rabbi, thank you for joining us. Yes, sir.
It'll be a 40-minute speech. Good morning.
Good morning.
Friends, let us join together in prayer. Almighty God, as we have assembled here today for the purpose of communal service on behalf of the residents of our beautiful city, bless our work here today. Bless the work of the Honorable Mayor, City Councilors, City Manager, City officials, and their staff, along with all our fellow citizens. Bless that our efforts bear good fruit, that our thoughtful, honest, and respectful dialogue lead to constructive results. Please guide our hand as we make important decisions for our community and keep us from inadvertent error. In our civic service, we fulfill the mandate that you have bestowed upon us, instructed to Noah in his day, and conveyed through Moses at Mount Sinai, to make your garden, our world, which you have given to us to inhabit, a safe, moral, and constructive place. A beautiful place, one filled with goodness and kindness, that expresses the beauty of divine intent. Almighty God, in the merit of our sincere efforts, bless us all with good health, success in all our endeavors, and positive abiding results from our work. Bless our wonderful city and communities so that it continue to prosper and grow to be a model city within our great state and our beloved country. Almighty God, bless us with clarity, bless us with strength, and bless us with peace. Now let it say on me.
Amen. Thank you, Rabbi. Thank you for being with us today. And the pledge of allegiance to the United States flag and to the Texas flag will be led by Gianna Palacios. She's a senior at Richard King High School. She's a drum major, and she is the senior council president.
Thank you. Please face the United States flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Please face the Texas flag. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
Thank you, Gianna, and good luck in your studies. Ms. Warta, would you please call the roll? Mayor Paulette Juarez. Present. Councilmembers Roland Barreda.
Here.
Sylvia Campos.
Here.
Here.
Gil Hernandez.
Here.
Michael Hunter.
Here.
Jim Klein.
Here.
Mike Pusley.
Here.
Everett Roy.
Here.
Dan Suckley.
Here.
City Manager Peter Zanoni.
Present.
City Attorney Miles Rizley.
Here.
Mayor and Council, a quorum of the council, and the required charter officers are present to conduct the meeting. Thank you, Ms. Warta. Okay, we'll move on to Section E. Mr. Zanoni, your city manager's comments and update on city operations.
Yes, ma'am, great, thank you, and good morning, Mayor, and members of the council. We do have three items today, and moved pretty quickly through them this morning. So our first one is an update on the stranded barge at the Packery Channel. And yesterday, myself and Nieman, as well as Councilman Suckley, were on White Cat Beach doing a media event so that the community would be very clear about the expectations of the city and the private firm that has to remove their barge. So Nieman is going to give us an update here this morning so that the full city council is aware of this plan. It's been over four months now that the barge has been stranded there. It's not a city barge, nor will city tax dollars be used to remove it. It's part of the Packery Channel restoration work that's happening, and it belongs to a subcontractor of Callan Marine, who's the firm rebuilding the Packery Channel, which is a $15 million project, a huge improvement for our community. And Nieman will walk us through kind of what happened and what's the plan for the next 15 days. We do have safety, and a lot of what we do in the city, safety is a top priority, so safety is of importance to us, and as well as how I concluded our message yesterday, transparency and openness to the community is another important aspect of us here at City Hall. And so yesterday's briefing was in keeping with that, and today's briefing from Nieman is similar. So Nieman, we'll turn it over to you.
Thank you, sir. I'm Nieman Young, Assistant City Manager. In addition, I'm here also today with Brett Van Hazel, who is our Assistant Director for the Engineering Services Department. Brett and I have been working very closely together to ensure that we're maintaining strong management over the barge extraction project. This week, salvage contractor Resolve Marine will begin the recovery and disposal of a partially second construction barge located at the Packery Channel in Corpus Christi, Texas. As the city manager stated before, the city does not own nor operate the construction barge, and therefore, it is our intent for no city tax dollars to be spent on this extraction project. However, the channel is so important to both the residents and visitors of Corpus Christi, the city manager did expect for us to maintain transparency in this project and ensure that information regarding the progress of the project is shared across our constituents across the city. Just a little background, in September 2022, strong currents and high winds associated with Hurricane Ian dislodged the barge being used as a part of the Packery Channel restoration project. Despite the efforts of our partners, the barge had remained intact for over the last four months. In January, the city had found the four-month timeframe that the barge had been entrenched in the waters unacceptable, and therefore, the city issued a care notice to the contractor to convey that the barge must be removed immediately. This action led to the expediting of this issue, and the contractor was able to deliver extraction plans that are approved by many regulating agencies, to include the GLO and the U.S. Coast Guard. Over the weekend, Resolve Marine had came down to the city of Corpus Christi, and they began the extraction process. Over the weekend, divers went into the water to assess the barge, to ensure that it remained in one piece and it wasn't in multiple pieces, and to solidify the final plans for extracting the vessel. It was decided that once the barge is pulled onto shore, it will be cut into small pieces, loaded onto trucks, and hauled to a local salvage yard via beach access roads. To ensure safety of both the worker crews and the beachgoers, it is, as the city manager stated, necessary that we manage safety issues on the beach and in the waters. This will include managing access to the southern jetty of the Packery Channel and a limited area of the beach surrounding the area. City staff will work closely with the contractor to get the jetty and the beach back open as soon as possible. And while we know that this project is weather-dependent, it is anticipated that the barge will be removed from the beach in time for the spring break season. We just want to ensure that the public knows that the beach will be restored back to its original condition once the barge is removed, and it's also, again, important to note that the project is being funded by private funding dollars, which is the contracting agency in addition to the insurance company. With that being stated, we'll stand by for any questions or concerns from Mayor and Council.
Thank you, Dr. Young. I don't see any. We appreciate the update.
Okay, great. Thank you. Thanks, Nieman. Just to recap, so this week, we'll be setting up the staging, as they call it, to remove the barge, and then next week, the barge will be pulled from the water. So we'll give more information as that happens next week.
And thank you for the communication on that that you've been having with council. We appreciate that.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you, Mayor. Okay, our sec—
Councilman Pusley.
So, Peter, where does this put the company with respect to the work that they were doing for restoration of the shoreline along Packery? Has this delayed the project?
Yeah. No, it hasn't delayed the project at all, Councilman. The project's on schedule and within budget. This barge was bringing in rock. You may recall some of the pictures with the big boulders on there. And it got stranded during that hurricane, I guess, Ian.
But this hasn't slowed their work down as far as the rest?
No, hasn't slowed their work. In fact, we reported yesterday that work is happening along the jetty on the south bank, from the west to the east, and then they're going to transition over to the north bank, from east to west. There's a lot of work happening, and they're doing good. Brett and his team are project managing the project, so that is an important point. The fact that the barge is stranded and it's taking months should not be a reflection of the work that they're performing. Callan Marine is a very good firm, a very big firm from Houston, doing this work. They're doing a great job on the project. A subcontractor of theirs is who they relied on to bring in the rock on this barge. So it's a little bit of, you know, finger pointing, but still, we want to hold Callan accountable. As we said yesterday, four months, four, five months is really enough for us, so we need to get it moved out, especially for spring break that really begins almost next week for some schools in northern states. Right, so a good point, though, Callan. We appreciate them, and the work they're performing is coming along real nice. Okay, thank you. Thank you. Okay, Mayor, our second item is another briefing, and this one's going to be given by Mike Murphy, who is our Chief Operating Officer of our Water Utilities. And this is an item Councilman Pusley brought to our attention some time ago, that back in the 80s when we were in another drought like we're almost in today. The city sold affluent water to commercial contractors that used it to irrigate properties and such. So Mike Murphy and his team have been working on seeing how can we bring this business model back. We know that we have six wastewater treatment plants, and in total, about 30 million gallons of wastewater that's treated is released into the, to our bays and estuaries and ocean ultimately. But that water is just a stage away from being potable, and so we're looking at, Mike Murphy has put together a program where we can sell to commercial users from the Oso Wastewater Treatment Plant affluent water rather than dumping it all, I guess, into the bay. So Mike's going to talk about this program that's officially available at this point, right? Yes, sir.
Mr. Manager. Good morning, Council. Mayor and Council. Mike Murphy, Chief Operations Officer, CCW. I've got with me Wes Nebgen, who is our Director over Water and Wastewater Infrastructure. So we're quickly going to go through the proposed plan. The overview, here we are. This is the entry gate into the Oso Wastewater Treatment Facility. It's a type-two, type-one facility, and the fill station is easily accessible. We've got it all ready to go. We've tested it. It works extremely well. And then we're also going to go over our communications plan. But the way that this fill station is going to be used is sort of like curbside service. I mean, everybody's done that nowadays with, whether you're picking up groceries, picking up food at a restaurant, or at Best Buy or something like that, there's a curbside service. This is the same thing here. You pull up to this, there's a phone number right there. If there's not already an operator on-site helping someone else, you just dial this number, and then we'll have one of our professional operators come out and fill your truck for So the way the system is going to work, Oso Wastewater Treatment Plant produces about 8 million gallons a day of treated wastewater effluent, making it a great location to offer this service. Commercial customers can apply to pick up reclaimed affluent water through a subscription billing service for a flat rate of $50 per vehicle, and what this gets you, and this is all the way up to 1,000 gallons per truck. And this, and then if you go up, it's in increments of 1,000. If you bring in a 2,000 gallon truck, it's $55. A $3,000 truck, it's $60, on and on like that. So this is a once-per-month flat rate, and you can go by this facility, and you can load your vehicle as many times as you choose to do for that one flat rate. Applications must be completed and approved before utilizing the facility, and then customers will be given a permit. We're initially going to start the program Monday through Friday between the business hours of 9:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. That's the original start of the program, and then we're going to be very flexible in if we want to change that depending on the use of the system. Our communication plan is very simple. Existing commercial customers who are currently using a construction meter, we're going to reach out to them with a letter in the mail based on their current address that they provided us, and we're also going to send them an email with all the information and documents on there that you need to fill this permit out. And once the application has been submitted back to CCW and approved, the customer will receive a permit to use the facility. The payment plan is very simple. It's what we're currently using on other similar-type activities where you will get an invoice in the mail, and then you can come in at the UBO office, and you can pay with check, credit card, or you can mail in the payment if you choose to do that, with a check or with a money or, thank you, Wes. New customers, if you don't already have this service, you can email us at saveblue@cctexas.com. Email us that. We'll send you all the information, and then we'll start that process for new customers. We'll also have all of the information. If you don't choose to use that very simple process, we will put it online at our cctexas.com under wastewater. So we're going to show very short drone footage of the facility, if we can get Cam to start that. Okay, so there we go. This is the entrance off of Nile Drive. This is our Oso Wastewater Treatment Plant. You can see that it has a much better appearance than it's had in the past, thanks to Peter helping us get the money approved to clean that facility up. You can see the entrance right off of Nile Drive, 601 Nile Drive. You enter that roadway, and you can pull right up to the gate, and we'll just stop it right there. You can pull right up to the gate, and that's where you'll find the loading dock, and you'll have signs, just follow the signs. It'll show you where to stop, who to call. We'll load your truck, and then we'll send you back off on your way. And then, like I said, you can come back as many times in a month as you would like to do. Wes, you have anything you want to add to that?
No. Councilman Wright.
So, thank you. The question I had, number one, was you said you had a start date, but is that established?
Yeah, so March 1st.
March 1st.
Yes, sir. I'm sorry, I should have said that. March 1st is going to be the start date. Now, we can, we're going to go ahead, and as a result of this presentation, we'll send out a press release, inform the public, and then you can already start sending in your applications and all this, and hopefully have everything ready to go by March 1st.
Could you come back within a 90-day timeframe and just let council know how successful the program has been? That would be appreciative. Thank you.
Yes, sir. We're glad to do it.
Councilman Hunter.
Thank you, Mayor. I just got a quick question. That is the only entrance, correct?
I'm sorry?
That is the only entrance. We won't be utilizing the NSJON entrance.
No, no. This is the only entrance that you're going to use.
Because I live right there, and I want to be able to get home on time.
No, this is the entrance. This is it. Appreciate that.
Yeah. Councilman Suckley.
So there are some folks in the Pharaoh Valley subdivision that have been complaining about the traffic on Nile recently. Got an email over the weekend about it. I think there may be some restrictions about truck traffic on Nile, so that needs to be obviously checked into if we're encouraging people to enter through Nile as to how they would get access off of SPID.
Okay. We'll look into that. And we thought about truck traffic on Nile Drive, but the, as you can see from that drone footage, the entrance is probably a couple of hundred yards long. We don't anticipate trucks queued up outside of that. Doubt that that's going to happen, but that's a good question. We'll follow up.
Okay. Thank you. And then, secondly, is, so this change that we're recommending, this program, is primarily to do away or minimize the amount of fresh water used in these type of applications as opposed to now encouraging treatment. We're not, we're not going to move the needle on the revenue, per se, from this project. It's more so using the treated water as opposed to fresh water.
That's exactly right. That's exactly right.
Okay. Thank you.
Councilman Pusley.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I just want to extend my appreciation to Michael and Peter and everybody for, you know, taking this, and, you know, when we first started talking about this, it hadn't been done in a very long time, so it's obviously a way we can save the precious water that we have in our reservoirs and whatnot for watering of different landscaping across the city. And it was highly used back in the 80s. I remember seeing the trucks going all over the city supplying effluent for people who have large yards or acreage that they need to take care of. So thank you all very much for taking charge on this.
Glad to do it.
Councilman Hernandez.
Thank you, Mayor. Just out of curiosity, this water will be chlorinated, right?
Chlorinated?
Right. You don't remove the chlorine until it actually gets to the point where it's entering the, I guess.
I'll leave that.
Good afternoon. Council Wesley Nebgen, Director of Water System Infrastructure. So yes, it will be chlorinated at the point where the pumps are located is before the dechlorination process occurs, but it is not required by TCEQ to have it chlorinated, because a lot of our facilities do have UV systems as well, and, but in this case.
But also doesn't have the UV system, so you use chlorine to disinfect it, right?
Right. Yes.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Councilwoman Campos.
Thank you. And thank you, Councilman Mike Pusley, for that recommendation, and thank you also, Mike, you know, for taking up that gold. How long did that take you to do that? Did you mention that in your presentation, to put the program together?
So we've been working on this since, I guess, before the end of last year, which was just brought to our attention. So there's been a lot of research that we've been having to do. We had to obviously construct a loading site, and we've also looked at doing it in other locations, too.
Okay, so it took you like a year to, you know, get this program, and now we're going to see how well or how, you know, how it does. My thing is, just like Mike recommended this, I'm sure there's other recommendations that we can also offer to our, you know, heavy industrial users, and I know I keep harping on that, but I hope that this, that people are listening, especially the plant managers, that they can use this as well. Could they use these affluent waters? Could they use affluent waters for their treatment plants?
Are you talking about industrial?
Industrial.
So this water is available for industrial also. It's commercial and industrial. Can come and collect this water.
Okay, so I hope they're listening. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Yeah, Councilwoman, if I can add to that, last week, we met with the plant managers, Mike Murphy and I, to bring them up to speed with the council's policy dialogue of recent weeks. Valero brought to our attention that several councils ago, probably, I don't know, six, eight years ago, Valero actually propositioned the city to build and pay for a pipeline system from our second biggest wastewater treatment plant on Greenwood, to have that affluent water be shipped directly to Valero.
Right.
For some reason, that council voted down the project, or something happened. We have to do some more research, but I think industry is willing to invest money, their own money, to build infrastructure, to use this water that, as I mentioned, 30 million gallons on an average day is disposed of. And it's, if you went to one of the wastewater treatment plants and looked at the final product, it's crystal clear, as I've done that in my time here. But, so we're going to engage that dialogue with Valero. They said that they spent $3 million on design documents, and so we're going to get those back out as well. We need to think of all options when it comes to water here, and we're glad that the industrial partners are willing to contribute. partners are willing to contribute financially and be a big part at the table to help us solve this issue, so.
Thank you. Thank you again for mentioning that because I had heard that also, and I didn't know why it had been voted down. I hope with the new council, yeah, with the new council that we, you know, we come back to that.
Exactly.
And revisit that. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. That's all the questions.
Okay, great. Thank you, Mayor. There's one more item, but since we're on water, I just did want to tell the council and the community of the listening of our forecast. So as we know, probably over a year now, as part of our business model with Corpus Christi Water, we meet with the National Weather Service every week to get a weekly and a long-term, a three-month or so forecast of the weather, as most of our, all of our water depends on rain in both the west and the east and aquifers. So the update for this week that was given to us yesterday is more of the same. I just want to point that out to the council and the community. We know that this morning, combined reservoir levels on the western side, Choke Canyon and Lake Corpus Christi is now down to forty-one percent, combined levels, forty-one percent full. The forecast for this week is no rain forecasted, and then through May, so we take March, April, May for the next three months, the forecast from the National Weather Service is above normal temperatures, a fifty to sixty percent chance that temperatures will be above the seasonally normal temperatures, and that will be at near-normal precipitation. This is an equal chance to get rain that we normally get and don't get. So a little bit hotter and drier, and rain is kind of at a neutral standpoint, but for these three months, the not-heavy rain-producing months anyway, generally about two inches when you look at it, per month, when you look at a thirty-year historical average. So we still want to make sure the community is aware, and we're aware of our water situation and the forecast. I thought I'd point that out this morning.
Thank you, Peter.
Okay, great, Mayor. And then just one final item on the agenda is...
Peter, if you don't mind, we're going to go and do public comment, and then we'll come back to that last item.
Great. I didn't realize it was at that time.
That's fine. Yeah, that's okay. Mr. Risley.
Citizens are authorized and encouraged to present their views to the council on city-related matters. However, such should be done in a factual, precise presentation, and questions of council or staff are inappropriate. Loud, boisterous, profane, or obscene language or behavior is not allowed.
Thank you, Mr. Risley. So individuals will be called upon in order in which they signed up electronically. In-person public comments will be taken first, followed by virtual public comment. Corpus Christi residents will take precedence over non-residents, and for those commenting in person, I would like to remind everyone that a recording is being made of the meeting. Please speak into the microphone located at the podium and state your name and address before beginning your comments. There are two opportunities in which you can make public comment on an agenda item. The first is at this time, and the second would be when we actually hear the item. So please choose one option, as we cannot speak at both. Citizen comments are limited to three minutes. Non-resident comments are limited to one minute. And for those commenting in person, there is a timer underneath the base of the microphone. It will let you know exactly how much time you have left to speak. Once the buzzer goes off, I would ask that you finish your sentence and conclude those comments. If you have a petition or any information, please hand it to our City Secretary, Ms. Huerta, before getting to the podium, and she will distribute that to us. So with that, we will go ahead and start our first public comment. We have about eight public comments this morning. Eli McKay.
Oh, yeah, that's got to go down. Alrighty. Hello, my name is Eli McKay, and I live on the ancestral homeland of the Karanka and Lipana Apache peoples, like all of you. However, I live at ten oh eight Marguerite Street here at Uptown Corpus Christi. I'm here today to demand that the city prioritize and establish a low- or no-barrier shelter in the vicinity of existing resources like Mother Teresa, Metro Ministries, and the Salvation Army. Since 2020, I have been volunteering with the Free Store Corpus Christi. We provide resources to people experiencing extreme poverty, especially here in the Uptown area. This opportunity has allowed me to build relationships and get to know a portion of the community that I never had before. They have shared their stories, both uplifting and traumatic, and share a community bond stronger than many that I've seen. The most important lesson that I learned from our friends is about barriers, things that I never would have imagined being a barrier could be one for many people. While most of our local shelters stay at or near capacity, many require daily payment to stay there, which is a major barrier. Many of our unhoused neighbors find and rescue stray animals who become their beloved pets. Pets are not allowed in the shelters, another barrier. Shelters often require people to identify themselves, which can be a barrier for folks who are fleeing violence or just need to remain anonymous. Mental health is a barrier. Substance abuse can be a barrier, keeping people from going into a shelter. CCPD is a major barrier when they sweep people's belongings outside of Mother Teresa and underneath the Crosstown Expressway, to name a few locations. So now that you have a clear picture of what some of the common barriers are, imagine a place where people who are experiencing homelessness have access to a free location where they can rest their head without harassment, keep their belongings safe, and even have their pets with them. A place where nonprofits and community mutual aid groups can organize and congregate to disperse aid and also offer access to resources and build community. Once you establish the location, the community will build itself. I can speak from experience from our picnics that we do at South Bluff Park. It's become more of a community than it ever has been prior, and I've lived in the area for almost twelve years. So we've built more community in the past year in the South Bluff Park area than I've seen in the past twelve. So like I said, once you establish the location, the community will build itself. It will grow into a stepping stone, helping to transition people out of homelessness. I urge all to make this a priority. This is the first step that the city is currently skipping over. Thank you.
Thank you, Eli.
Peter, please.
Yes, ma'am.
Could you please follow up with Ms. McKay on that low-barrier shelter?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Actually, I was going to say that. I think Jennifer, I thought I saw her here. Yeah. If Jennifer can please, maybe, where did she go? There you are. Ms. McKay, she, we need to let her know about Phase One and Phase Two over at Salvation Army, which includes...
Exactly what you're talking about. Thank you, Ms. McKay. So if you get with Ms. Buxton.
Next would be Jack Gordy. Mr. Gordy, is he in the house? No. Okay. Maggie Peacock.
Good morning, all. Maggie Peacock, District Four, seven eight four one two. Last week, I mentioned that the seven cities above us, Houston, San Antonio, Dallas, Austin, Fort Worth, El Paso, and Arlington, all have an environmental department/committee and/or chief of sustainability in some form or another. Today, I want to start diving a little bit into each of these cities and suggest how our home of Corpus Christi can not only continue to advance for city members and tourists who come to visit our beloved beaches, but also secure a safe, secure, and equitable future for young people like myself and future generations who will also call this sparkling city by the bay their home. Starting off in Dallas, the Environmental and Sustainability Committee helped establish the Comprehensive Environmental and Climate Action Plan. In this plan, they have ambitious yet realistic goals for their city. Some of these include reducing greenhouse gas emissions by forty-three percent by the year 2030 and becoming carbon-neutral by 2050, meaning making no net release of carbon dioxide in the atmosphere by offsetting their emissions through initiatives like planting trees. Since we have a city that invests so heavily in industry to advance our economy, initiatives like this that invest in natural carbon sinks are vital. Making a hundred percent of their new construction efforts net-zero by 2030, also by offsetting their emissions. Creating a thirty-five and forty-five percent reduction in waste diverted from landfills, which release methane into our atmosphere by 2030 and 2050. Making sure that eighty percent, ninety percent, and ninety-five percent of the city population lives within a mile walk to a park or trail by 2030, 2040, and 2050, respectfully, and more. And Dallas is achieving these goals by developing carbon neutrality plans for municipal operations, implementing citywide weatherization programs, updating building codes, developing a city forest carbon credits program, which is really cool. It encourages planting trees, and much more. They also invest in neighborhood infrastructure to revitalize historically underserved neighborhoods and support and leverage the work of academic institutions and nonprofits that are working to fill the science and data gaps that bring best practices to their city. We can all learn from the goals and success stories of the cities above us so that we can continue to improve as the city ourself. We are all community members here, and we all care about the well-being of our home. By prioritizing funding for an environmental and sustainability department, we can get that done together. Thank you to everyone who has met with and/or made plans to meet with my team at Go Mix, and if you haven't yet, please do. We really just want to continue these conversations with you all so that we can support and learn from one another, and really, please help us help y'all. Thank you.
Thank you, Maggie. Armon Alex.
Before we start the timer, just for context, that's some of the crude oil that we picked up. I just wanted to give you guys an idea of what we're dealing with on our shorelines. And it's got a smell, so pass it over and keep the lid on it. Sorry. My name is Armon Alex. I live in District Three, seven eight four one seven, sixteen ten La Jolla Street. It's been about two months since two-hundred-and-twenty-four-thousand cups of crude oil polluted our Corpus Christi Bay. Since then, no significant action has been taken by this council to prevent future man-made environmental disasters like this. Oh, we're missing a council member. Just a couple of months ago, or days ago, on Sunday, I visited North Beach and collected and reported even more industrial crude oil. Myself and my colleague were there for a short time and only covered about less than a quarter mile, and we could still see the apparent remnants collected, you know, of the crude oil. So again, this demonstrates that the cleanup is not done, and the toxic remnants still exist on our shorelines and continue to pose a risk. And for the record, I have visited this governing body for about four other times regarding this issue. During one of my recent trips to North Beach, I had to stop and help a mother. I had to explain to her that the sticky stuff that she was wiping off of her child's foot was from a recent oil spill, and she had a million questions ranging from the contents of the oil to why her city failed to warn her of the actual oil spill. And I want to put this very bluntly. We may not always agree on issues, the issues that the city has to handle, but I firmly believe that we can agree that a situation like that should never happen again. And this is another example why, in order for our city and city council to follow through on its promise of making Corpus Christi one of the most livable communities in America, to create a vibrant, progressive, and clean city, to keep our citizens safe and secure and to provide an abundance of economic development opportunities while paying special attention to our unique environment, we need to allocate resources towards an internal city services department once again. Like Maggie said, the top economic-driving cities in our state already have these departments and staffing in place because they recognize that preventing and appropriately addressing man-made environmental disasters in a timely and efficient manner keeps their citizens safe and secure. The environmental departments there help to create a vibrant, progressive, and clean city, and it also saves that city millions of dollars spent during recovery efforts. For every one dollar spent on preventative and resiliency efforts, the city stands to save about six dollars in return. Let us use this oil spill as an example, and let us all set precedent that disasters like this can never happen again, and that there will be accountability, there will be transparent and effective communication, and any future man-made environmental disasters, our council will take proactive action. Council members, please be on the right side of this historic moment. Reach out to our team. We have plenty of resources to share with you, and ultimately, we want to help you fulfill your commitments to our community. Thank you all so much.
Thank you, Mr. Alex. Councilman Klein.
I think if we could just follow up, and I think there was some talk at the last meeting about receiving a report from Flint Hills about the cause of the spill and the process, the place we're at in the cleanup process as well. Is there any update on that request?
I don't have an update on their report, but hold on just one moment here. So let me just, for context, let the full council know what is happening. So Flint Hills Resources is not done with the cleanup or with the monitoring of the situation. They are meeting, they are meeting weekly still. Flint Hills does, is a weekly meeting with Flint Hills Resources, the Coast Guard, the Texas General Land Office, who's managing, is the overall arching managing entity, and then the city of Corpus Christi. So once a week, debrief meetings happening. There's still a contract recovery crew on standby, and they're on call twenty-four-seven, twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week. And Flint Hills is continuing to report the line to call, the telephone number to call if somebody like Armon has spotted some of the oil still coming ashore. The area of biggest concern still is the beach that's down there by Texas A&M Corpus Christi, and they have continuous communication with TAMU CC representative on that beach where more of the oil is coming ashore. So the cleanup is not done, the incident is not closed. We're expecting two reports, and I have to get that still. I know we talked over the weekend, Councilman. I'll get you those dates as soon as they're given to me. There should be two reports. One on the event that happened, the cleanup and the closure of it. As we know, in this type of an incident, Flint Hills or anybody, any company can't just close out the situation. All the entities that are involved, namely the state entities, need to deem it closed, and then it's closed. So a private-sector business can't in their own entity close it out. The state or federal agencies have to do that together, and this team that they're working in. So there should be a report that talks about the incident, what happened, and the cleanup efforts and the closure. We're also expecting a report from Flint Hills as to what happened, just for information for the community. I'm not sure how detailed that report will be, but Flint Hills has told us they're working on a report that can be shared that talks about exactly what happened. So far, the details are limited since it's a private-business matter, but it does impact the community, so we're expecting both those reports. So all that to say, we're expecting those reports, and I'll get the council hopefully before the end of this week, some anticipated deadlines or dates when those will come in.
And I presume that that would also include, then, steps they're going to take to prevent a repeat or something like this?
Right, absolutely. I suspect that second report is just specifically what happened, and then what corrective measures are they doing? As I mentioned before, you know, if we look at our city seal, the oil's a part of the city, and Flint Hills Resources is on record, as are we, because we met with them to say that this type of an incident is unacceptable. They'll be the first to tell you that. It's not part of their business model. They're not happy it happened, and they're doing everything they can do to clean it up and communicate. We're learning from it as well, even though it wasn't the city that caused the event. I think next time, we'll be more available for the community to help share our information. We were sharing it with the council, but we didn't, because of the holiday season and the limited staff that was here right around Christmas time, we didn't share a lot of information with the community, but we know that the next time we'll be doing that. So we've learned from it as well.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
And Peter, if you'll please share all of that with the council. I'm sure you were going to, but just to make certain. Great, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Teresa, Teresa Mader.
I am Teresa Mader. I live at three 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 Catherine Drive in District Two in the Morningside Neighborhood. I'm here to speak in favor of the proposed zoning change for the property at thirty-one oh four South Alameda. I have to admit, when I first saw the sign posted on Alameda for another possible zoning change in my neighborhood, my heart sank. I thought perhaps Car Wash two-point-oh had reared its ugly head. After three phone calls to the city planning and zoning office, I finally received confirmation that it was not a car wash, but Bien Maritay that wanted to move in. Big, big sigh of relief mixed with joy. Since I had posted a warning on our Morningside Neighborhood Facebook page, I updated the post to relay this information, and I printed screenshots of that for you. As you can see, the post only received positive reactions, nineteen likes and six loves and seventeen comments. The only concern mentioned was the effect the close proximity of their delicious pastries might have on our waistlines. I came, I decided to speak today because I... I came, I decided to speak today because I noticed over the weekend on the agenda, the city council agenda, that there was no one on record either for or against. And I thought it must be difficult as a council member to make a decision when nobody has gone on record for or against. So I wanted to go on record. I wanted to let you know that the Morningside neighborhood, as best as I know, is in favor of it. I am in favor of changing the zoning to allow Bien Maritay to open a new location, and I encourage the council to approve the request. Bien Maritay, let me be one of the first to say, welcome to the neighborhood. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you, Ms. Mader. Thank you for taking the time to come down. Garrett Dorsey.
I was going to say, good afternoon. So it's always great. I love the ability to come up here and you get your three minutes. And it's always great because we get to see all of our council members and our mayor and the people who moved this city. I also get to see them sometimes at breakfast and at luncheons. Mr. Dan Suckley did a great job of explaining to people that if they have a concern, they can come here and talk about it. Residents of Flower Bluff, oh, sorry, forgot. 2037 Sunny Crest, Garrett Dorsey. Got to start off. About why the residents of Flower Bluff couldn't have their hornet on their water tower where the island had gotten a turtle. And again, we told them, Dan did a great job of explaining it and said, you know, but if you have concerns, come here and express them. So, and again, so I always love being able to come up here and talk to y'all and see y'all, and like I said, it functions, luncheons, dinners, and events. Ribbon cuttings also. But what I'd like to talk about today is some of the great things that DSD Development Services have been doing, and they have been working very well with the Builders Association. This last Friday, we meet on the sixth floor of City Hall here at 9:00. Thank y'all for the breakfast tacos. They're always yummy. And working with Peter and their staff and stuff like that. But what was really interesting is one of the comments and one of the topics that came up at this meeting was called "one-stop-shop." And I guess it's a thing that people don't understand, what are we really talking about? And it was really interesting because we came down with what we really, really were talking about, and that was solutions. We want someone to be able to say, I am the boss, and I am deciding this, and this is what's being decided. And Michael Murphy just left a little while ago, and it was a prime example of our Thanksgiving Homes, which does infill lot programs. And we were having some issues with TAPS and with DSD, and Yvette Dodd, love Yvette, she always takes care of everything. But what we found is it's communication. We all have phones, we have computers, we have tons of emails, but communication is what we found was the missing link is still today. And finding someone who can make a decision and say, yes, you can do this. And that's one of the things we came back with Al Raymond at the meeting and said, Al, one-stop-shop means we want someone to say, yes, you can do this. And that's what builders really want, and that's what the community is. And so I do remind people, is open communication, getting communication in meetings like we have with your staff is fantastic because we solve a lot of problems that don't have to be hashed out in the media or become, you know, other issues. I would like to say someone had talked about codes. The city just adopted the newest building codes. And talked about trees. We now plant two trees for every house. Carbon offsets. And also, we talked about homeless. I was just at the Veterans Roundtable this morning at Delmar. We talked about that at OFH. Operation Finally Home, we're coming back in. We've done some Wounded Warrior Homes with Brazelton and the Builders Association, talking about doing some more there. But I was telling them about Promise Point. I think a couple councils ago had gone to Victoria, Texas, and seen a great working model called Promise Point of what you can do with a hand up in homelessness. So again, thank y'all very much.
Thank you, Garrett. Thank you so much. John Weber.
John Weber, 609 Naples Street. Three minutes is not enough time to properly inform the council the health effects of gas, so please read my written comments and references for greater understanding. After we say the Pledge of Allegiance to the Flags, we should also read the city's mission statement. It states, "Meet vital health, safety, and general welfare needs of the residents, which sustain and improve their quality of life." It doesn't say to maximize the profit of the gas department at the expense of the health of the citizens. Why are rebates only given for gas appliances and not electric appliances? What if a person prefers an electric appliance? We are all taxpayers regardless of our fuel preference for our home appliances. Is gas safe? It depends. How old or young are you? How much time do you spend in your house? How well is your house sealed? How well are your gas appliances vented, if they are vented? Do any of the appliances have pilot lights that are burning all the time? There is no average house in Corpus. Every house is different, along with the people inside of them. Many houses don't have range hoods that vent outside the house. Many houses don't even have windows that open, they're painted shut. The only way to make sure it is safe is to have the air tested in each house. The gas department's job is to make sure people are safe and healthy. I have failed to find any peer-reviewed studies showing that a house with gas appliances has better or equal air quality as one without gas appliances. When gas is burned, it emits NOx, CO, CO2, CH4, N2O, VOCs, and trace amounts of SO2 and PM. I have suggested before the gas department make nitrous oxide monitors available to the public to check out for a week's time to monitor their indoor air quality. From flyers, the flyers the gas department, besides being inaccurate and misleading, as I have covered this before, don't educate the public of the health dangers of gas and how to minimize those dangers. They have plenty of money in their budget, almost a million dollars just for marketing. Why do they even have a marketing budget? They have zero competitors. It really shouldn't be my responsibility to prove the negative health consequences of using gas. It should be the gas department's responsibility to prove that it is safe and healthy for all the citizens in the city that have gas appliances in each of their individual homes. If it is presumed to be unsafe or unhealthy, it should be made safe or removed from the house. There should be rebates available to help with the cost of making each home safe and healthy for the residents. Thank you all, and have a nice day.
Thank you, Mr. Weber. So that concludes our in-person public comment, and I believe we have one, Webex.
Yes, ma'am. Julie Rogers.
All right. Good morning. My name is Julie Rogers. We've got the clock going. I live at 710 Furman Avenue downtown. I wanted to start today by giving a big shout out to the 2023 Corpus Christi Songwriter Festival. It was a huge event and quite successful. There were nearly 40 songwriters here in our city. I can't tell you how many got up on stage and said how welcoming we are here in Corpus Christi and how they enjoy their time here, and it felt so good. I don't feel quite as good right now after hearing some of the public comments, so I'm going to try to get my energy back. But let's keep moving Corpus Christi forward, and I know that everybody's trying to do that. I think the council is. I think the citizens are. But we must diversify our economy. City Manager Zenoni mentioned that on our city seal, there is an oil derrick. Yes, there is. But there's also a sailboat, there's a mirador, there's a seawall, there's fish, and there's our beautiful bay. So tourism is an industry. Today, on the agenda, you're able to approve the fourth amended and restated management services agreement with the Corpus Christi Area Convention and Visitors Bureau, also known as Visit Corpus Christi. I would like, the staff has recommended that you approve it. I also recommend that you approve it. Tourism brings at least $30 million in sales tax revenue for the city. It funds 8% of the entire city's expenses. We wonder how we're going to get our money to fix roads, to create other great projects, and the Visit Corpus Christi is certainly one way to do it. There's one more thing I'd like to address, and that has to do with tourism, and I can't tell you how many people come to visit, and I send them out to the national seashore, specifically for the turtle releases. Our turtle release program is at threat. Many people in the community are talking about it. The National Park Service has planning sessions tonight. They do not have a beach management plan, so they want to come up with one, and they're looking for public input. I would like for all citizens to try to do that. You can submit comments electronically until March 14th, or you can go to the Texas State Aquarium Tuesday or Wednesday night from 6:30 to 8:30 and find out more about the plans they have and give input on it. Two things they're considering is to hold fewer public releases of the turtles, and another is to make changes to beach driving. And I think that we need to make sure we follow our Texas Open Beaches Act and make beaches accessible to everyone. I would ask that the city council consider, as a body or as individuals, to make a resolution or public comment supporting the turtle program and driving on our beaches. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Rogers. Mayor, that concludes the public comment period.
Great. Okay, thank you. Mr. Zenoni, we'll go back to you.
Okay, Mayor. We do have one final item, and it's to talk about an area development plan, Community Input Meeting this Thursday. But there's two other meetings at the same time or in the same evening, so I want to talk about all three on this item. So this Thursday, February 23rd, there's three meetings in the city, two of which the city is hosting, and then a third one, TCEQ, is hosting. And so there's the Cheryl Park Master Plan, second meeting that'll take place Thursday night. There's the Bayside Area Development Plan Meeting that'll be taking place as well. And then TCEQ is holding a public hearing for CC Polymers that's trying to renew a discharge permit. So the Cheryl Park Master Plan's from 5:30 to 6:30. The Bayside Area Development Plan is 5:30 to 7:30. And that Bayside Area Development Plan is a drop-in type meeting, so you can come in at any time from 5:30 to 7:30, and you could probably fully participate, see all the exhibits, give your input within about 30 minutes. So if somebody wanted to go to the TCEQ meeting that begins at 7:00 to 9:00, you could probably still do both. And then the Cheryl Master Plan, though, is 5:30 to 6:30, and that's a continual meeting. You'd probably want to be involved in that entire one. So let me just run through the three. So the Cheryl Park Master Plan, as we know, Turner Ramirez Architect Firm has been retained by the city to help the city develop a master plan for Cheryl Veterans Memorial Park. We know this plans to install several items that can show our appreciation for the military, including a helicopter, a seal from a submarine, and the lone sailor. The two meetings are scheduled at the Art Center. We had the first one last week, Wednesday, that was very well-attended, February 15. The second meeting will be this Thursday, February 23rd. Mark Scott and Judge Connie Scott most likely will be in attendance, just as an FYI, as will former Councilman Billy Lurma. They'll be in attendance as well. Mike Scott, I'm sorry, not Mark, Mike Scott, sorry. Sorry, Mike.
That happens often.
Yeah, not Mark. Well, Mark may be there too, but Mike Scott and Judge Connie Scott will be there, former Councilman Billy Lurma as well. So on Wednesday, March 1, after these two meetings, there's a special meeting with the Parks and Recreation Advisory Committee, known as PREC, to show them the input of the two meetings. And then we are scheduled to bring the plan, the master plan, to city council for consideration on March 7. So March 7. So that's the plan for it. On the TCEQ public hearing with CC Polymers, there will be a TCEQ public meeting regarding the renewal of wastewater discharge permits for CC Polymers. CC Polymers is a polymers plant that began construction, never finished, now they're finishing it. The mayor and I had the opportunity to meet with their CEO a few months ago. Looks like they have a pretty solid business plan. Their permit to discharge effluent from a seawater desalinization plant, stormwater, just normal discharge from plant operations, that's what that permit's for. It's not just for a seawater desalinization permit, it's for numerous discharge permits of all types of water. So that is going to take place at 7:00 to 9:00 p.m. up at the Holiday Inn Airport at 5549 Leopard Street, so further up towards Cal Allen, 7:00 to 9:00. Several from the city plan to be there, including myself. And then the last meeting on Thursday is the Bayside Area Development Plan, and this one was scheduled many months ago, takes some coordinating time. We're going to be having it at a school, at a CCISD. We thank them for its school. And as well, there's a consultant involved, so there was some request to see if we could reschedule it, but it'd be too complex to try to do that at this point. But as I mentioned, 5:30 to 7:30, and it's a drop-in at any time. There's exhibits, we want to hear your input. So let me just cover the plan in case people are wondering, what is this and should I go to it? The Bayside Study Area covers 16 square miles between South Padre Island and Ocean Drive, Oso Bay to Crosstown Expressway, as you can see here on this map, and it goes as far north as Morgan Avenue. The study area is mainly in Councilwoman Campos's district, District 2, but there's some of it that is in District 4, as well as District 3 and a little bit in District 1. But the predominant section is in District 2. So the open house is Thursday. It will be from 5:30 to 7:30 at Hamlin Middle School Cafeteria on South Staples, that's just south of Dodridge. Hamlin Middle School on South Staples, 5:30 to 7:30. The open house will allow the community, we really do want the community to come out and give us their feedback on the plans, draft, vision themes, the policy initiatives, and to provide valuable insight that we may not be obtaining through our other means of communication, to include surveys and that type of thing. We encourage everyone to come out and participate. You can also view the project on our website. There's an hashtag or an address for it, which is, I guess, ccw.com/bayside. So cctexas.com/bayside is the address. So Mayor, that concludes that item. I didn't know if there's any questions on it?
Councilman Fessling? Do you have a question?
Not a question. Rebecca, would you just make sure that Ginny Wright? Denise, I'm sorry. Oh, I want to apologize. Send us a calendar invite for these events, please.
Yes, sir.
The CC Polymers and this event as well.
Very good.
Thank you.
Great. Okay, Mayor, that concludes the comments that were posted, but I did want to just point out one more thing. We still do have Pat Eldridge here with us in the front row, and she celebrated 45 years with the city just recently. Yes, 45 years. The police department kind of kept it on the down-low and did something at their police headquarters. But as we know, police is the Police Management Services Director, has been with the city for 45 years and still has many more years to go, she said to Chief recently. Yeah, Pat, congratulations. Yeah, congratulations, Pat.
I can't believe this happened. Wow. She's like number two here.
21-year-old. She's 15. She came directly from the hospital.
Directly from the hospital. Congratulations, Pat. Thank you for all you do. Yes, okay.
That concludes our remarks, Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Zenoni. And before we move on, I just want to also bring up, you know, we are entering the 88th legislative session. And so tomorrow, is it tomorrow? Yes, tomorrow, the council, and I think it's about 100 people from the Coastal Bend area who will be traveling to Austin. We have several council members, myself, who will be traveling to Austin to go advocate for our legislative agenda. And so it's very important, I just want you all to know that in these next few months, we will be spending a lot of time, you know, in and out of Austin. And of course, council members, especially our new council members, we invite you, if you have any questions, number one, we have our intergovernmental relations person, which is Wendy Herman. Please reach out to her if you have any questions. Of course, you can always reach out to myself. I will be in Austin tonight until Friday, so I'll be doing just that with the Coastal Bend and then just visiting some other legislators the rest of the week, and then attending a Texas Municipal League Board meeting on Friday. So again, this next few months will be very busy, but extremely important on advocating from everything to do with water to, you know, some legislation that would close beaches to just a slew of things in between. So it's critical, I invite council members, please, it isn't always possible, and I, you know, we understand that, to travel to Austin, but there are always things to advocate or other ways to advocate through in terms of your voice and your positions being heard. And Wendy will apprise us of those ways in terms of letters and just different things. So we look forward to it. I wanted the public to know that your council will be working for you in this legislative session, and we will be very strong advocates as to what is best for our city, what we want to advocate for, and make certain that, you know, we hold our local authority so that we listen to you and are able to make decisions and choices for you and what's best for this city and community. So with that, we will move on to Section G, which is our boards and appointments. Rebecca.
Yes, ma'am. Mayor and Council, we have two boards to appoint.
Mayor and Council, we have two boards to appoint to today. They are the Planning Commission and the Airport Zoning Commission. There are two vacancies on each board, and by ordinance, the members of the Airport Zoning Commission are composed of the same members as the Planning Commission. So the same members serve on both bodies. So consequently, the persons you appoint to the Planning Commission would also serve on the Airport Zoning Board. So there are, as I stated, there are two vacancies, and at this time, nominations would be in order, Mayor.
Okay, I'll go ahead and open up for nominations, gentlemen.
I'd like to nominate Justin Hedrick.
Okay, any other nominations?
I'd like to nominate Billy Lurma.
I'd like to nominate Michael Budd.
Any other nominations? Okay, we'll close nominations. We'll start over here.
Okay, so you can vote for two?
Vote for two, okay. Ms. Camples?
Why does it start with me? It's a tough one. I will support or vote for Billy Lurma and Justin, I'm sorry.
Justin Hedrick?
Lurma and Hedrick.
Lurma and Hedrick.
Lurma and Budd.
Lurma, Hedrick.
Lurma and Budd.
Hedrick and Budd.
Lurma and Hedrick.
Lurma and Hedrick.
Lurma and Budd.
Okay, so Mr. Hedrick and Mr. Lurma are appointed to both the Planning Commission and the Airport Zoning Commission. Thank you very much, Council.
Thank you. Ms. Whatson? That'll take us to Section I, Consent Agenda Items 5 through 10. Do we have any requests from the council to pull any item for individual consideration?
Yes, Mayor, I'd like to pull eight and nine.
Item number eight and item number nine. Anyone else? Okay, with that, I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda with the exception of items number eight and nine.
I move for approval.
Okay, do we have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed, say no. The motion carries. Item number eight is a motion authorizing the amendment number two for a professional services contract with Hanson Professional Services, Inc., to provide additional design for water and wastewater improvements for design, bid, and construction phase services for the residential street rebuild program. And that was pulled, Mr. Hernandez.
Okay. And Jeff, I know we had talked about this a little bit, and that's why I pulled it. These particular contracts are extensions for engineering service and for construction of streets that are not on the SPMP. Is that correct?
Well, so these are, I think we might be moving into the next item. So the amendment with Hanson is-
Well, I'm combining the two. Okay.
Well, they're a little different. So the item number eight, which is the amendment to the Hanson contract, is to add work to their scope, to do the utility work associated with the RSRP program. And the original thought by Public Works at the time that this was conceived was that the utility work would be minimal and that the utility work could be addressed by the in-house engineering and/or consultant on the IDIQ contracts, water, wastewater, and then coordinated with this. And then we've decided over time that that's probably not the best way to do it. The best way is to put it in one bid package and have one contractor doing that work.
Okay, and these were all for, every one of these were pre-scheduled RSRP program streets?
Correct. And the bid sets were under development, but the utility work wasn't included. And what we've found, we've had a couple of issues, you've probably seen where we finish a street, then we have to come in, we have utility problems, we have to excavate in the street. So this is to ensure that the utility work that needs to be done is done in coordination with the street improvements.
Okay, and since I'm combining these two, I want to talk a little bit about item number nine in terms of how, what streets these are.
Okay, the item nine is a different thing. The item eight is for the FY23 RSRP program and to add utility work to the design contract. So when those are bid, that's included in the construction, and it's managed by one contractor. Item nine is for, it's adding capacity to the SPMP contract with Haas Anderson to take on some streets that were originally intended to be done with in-house forces. And Public Works has decided that they need contract help on these streets, and so this seemed to be a convenient contract to put them on. This is, being done is an allowance up to the statutory limit, which Texas government code allows us to change order up to 25%. So it just takes us up to that statutory limit so that we can keep those streets that were on the FY21 program moving forward.
Okay, so these were FY21 streets that were originally off, scheduled to be done by in-house work-
Right.
That's correct.
That are determined that can't be done on in-house work and are being moved to a contract designed for SPMP program, which is fine, I guess, but the, we weren't provided any information as to why this was done this way or what the, what happened, right? So even in the agenda memo, it doesn't include which streets are being done or being transferred over to this and being done by contract work instead of in-house work. So can you give us a reason, I mean, can you explain why we're getting this contract extension prior to getting the information about what's happening with the IMP program that necessitates this?
And I think I'm going to let Ernie De La Garza, Public Works Director, take that question.
Okay, yes, sir. So the history of that, to repeat, the 11 streets, that is from the in-house program. Coming in from the in-house, the background is that when we had the original list of the IMP for the in-house, there was a projection of mill and overlay type repairs. And then there was a redo of that list. We explained that in the IMP update, that there has to be a reprioritization of the approach for the in-house because of the need to do a higher scope type work from the in-house work to the SPMP, I guess, capabilities. Now, the history of why we went and maneuvered from the in-house 11 streets to the SPMP, that is, predates me. The history that I have from that information is that it was mainly tied to the scope and the capabilities of the in-house resources that we have for mainly doing mill and overlay type work. And then the need for this 11 streets to require flex space and also hot mix and also flat work for curb and gutter. And we had discussions on the last IMP update that we're trying to migrate in-house capabilities and IMP work away from that type of approach because it's slowing us down. And what we're trying to do more of on the in-house is mainly pavement type work. We did talk about the pilot program for what we called the skin patch to speed up our in-house work, and that's something that we are currently evaluating. And that's why we're trying to get this type work out to the contractor's capabilities, which is, in this case, Haas Anderson. Does that answer your question, sir?
Okay, in the sense of what you're doing, you're explaining it, but I'm asking why we didn't do that beforehand, before bringing these to council to approve. We don't know which streets are going to be done. We don't know what the process is for deciding which ones can't be done.
You want the 11 streets, sir?
Right, I think he's referring to the 11 streets.
Right. So with regards to that, I mean, and I know you're going through a process of reviewing these things, but we have obligations to people that we have a published list out to when they're supposed to be done. So what I'm asking here is that why aren't we being given, you know, the information about what's happening prior to this? Because this is, this is kind of like, should be done after, we know what's happened.
Correct.
Do you have that attachment, Neiman? Councilman, I'm trying to see what you all have in your agenda packet, but in the paper book, there's a list of the streets, there's 11 streets that was included in the agenda material. So I can read them off to you, that Sheldon, Brookside, Country Don, Denver, Monitor, Hansheim, Juarez, Salazar, Garden, and Prescott. Those are the 11 streets over in the agenda.
Peter, I have the streets.
No, 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 no. No, you said, hold on, and we're gonna, if you ask a question, we wait for the answer because everyone here-
He just answered.
I know, but I'm going to make something clear. You said-
He just answered.
I know, but you just said I didn't want to eat the streets. So we cannot go back and forth here, and I'm gonna, hang on. If you ask a question, which you said, we need to know the streets, which in my opinion, we are policymakers. We need to know that 11 streets are being moved over from one contract to another, from in-house program to an outbound program, if you will, because we don't have the capacity, correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Edmonds, because we don't have the capacity in-house to do what he can do, the crew that is contracted. But I want to make sure we understand your question, because I don't think it's being, it may not be being answered.
Before I got a chance to finish, before Peter jumped in, when I was about to say something, was that I had gotten the list already. Okay, so that was, I mean, I knew about, I got-
I apologize, I thought you said that, you didn't have the list, yeah.
All right, so-
No, it was said.
So what I'm saying is that this overall program, in terms of what necessitated this to come over, because like I said, we have to explain to our constituency, and then when we did our tour, you sent me a list of the IMP where you have a lot of streets here in 2022 that are pending review, as well as in 2023, and we've been waiting here for a while. Now, in terms of the skin patch, this is what we did prior to purchasing the, or getting the equipment up and running for mill and overlays. And the delay that we were told that was with the mill and overlays was that the flatwork was bad, and we couldn't do the mill and overlay with the flatwork being bad. So then we had to add money, had to find money to redo curves and gutters so you can do the mill and overlay. Okay, so we're getting, it's progressing in a different way, and I understand, Ernest, you're not, I mean, you just got here not too long ago, right? We've had kind of a, ever since the passing of Richard Martinez, we've kind of had not a steady leadership in Public Works. I understand that. But can you put this together for us so we can understand what's actually happening? Because I'm, right now, I'm not sure if I can actually say to my constituents that their street's going to be done based on the list that we have. So can you, that's why I'm asking, this is kind of, we're doing this before, knowing what's happening.
Yes, sir, and I can explain that, sir. The bottom line, I think that the staff have been abundantly clear that we're approximately a year and a half behind on the IMP. You see the program years where we're still tackling program year 21 streets, and it's 2023. So upon taking on the Public Works Department, we really started digging into some of those projects that were named in the in-house programs of the IMP. And we identified 11 streets that were basically under scoped, meaning that previous staff went out there, looked at the pavement, looked at the conditions of the street, and figured that a simple mill and overlay would be able to address the roadway. However, under further scrutiny with new leadership and new staff, we had determined that that wouldn't be enough to make that street whole or meet city standards. We needed additional flatwork to be completed, we needed even base repairs and what we determined is a full reconstruction. So we did get the flatwork on the streets completed, those streets returned to us, and we had to make a decision. Do we want to bring those 11 streets back into the portfolio on our in-house projects and further delay the progress of the in-house projects? Or do we want to increase the capacity of the contract with the contracted community, give the streets to them, allow them to address those 11 streets, which gives the city, the in-house forces, the time and space that they need to continue to knock out the fiscal year 21 IMP, close it out, and get us back on schedule and keep us within the promise that we're making to the citizens. And what we, the staff decided, hey, well, the best option was to go ahead and turn it over to the contracted community, allow the Public Works Department the time and space that they need to conduct the remaining fiscal year 21 in-house projects and continue to move forward, and that's the recommendation today. And if council approves that recommendation, then that will free up the in-house projects to, I mean, the in-house projects to be ramped up to completing an additional 18 street projects and 8.7 miles of roadway. So it was really a quantifiable, quantifiable evidence for us that, hey, it makes more sense for us logically to turn it over to the contracted community, that's freeing up our forces to do more work and close out the fiscal year 21 program.
Okay, I don't have a problem with what you're saying, right? If you can't do it in-house, and we want to go into doing it contract work, that's fine, but we need to have this information, I mean, we're, I'm feeling like we're not getting all the information, right? When is it that you're going to come to city council with the updated IMP? We haven't added the fifth year like we normally do because we delayed that from the budget cycle. So, and then we're reevaluating, as per your statement, pending review on the existing one that we have.
Yes, sir.
You're leaving us in limbo here. So this is, this kind of, I want to say precipitated, this question is, where are we with that? When are we going to come back to council with the updated IMP, with the actual, you know, what's going to be done in-house? How is it going to be done? Is it going to be mill and overlay or this skin patch, which is what we used to do? And then, you know, what's the residential street reconstruction and the SPMP?
Yes, sir.
What's happening?
Yes, sir, and so that's not lost on us, that there needs to be more of a conversation with the staff and council regarding the revisions that we have advised is going to be come at the council. And we are working diligently to prepare the documentation, the recommendations of council. What's transparent to you all is, Ernie and the staff and myself as well have been working Friday nights to 8 o'clock, 8:30, 9 o'clock at night, because that's the only time that we really have to really give the IMP the dedication that it needs and the attention it needs to put together a plan that's going to reflect our infrastructure and more importantly, the capacity of the contracted community and city staff and our crews. There's different variables that we're going to be bringing to you all that haven't even been considered with the IMP. For example, thanks to Ernie's previous leadership, he said, well, have you all looked at trash truck routes? Do any trash truck routes have a more impact on a street than at the front of the trash route? No, we hadn't. So, you know, we're getting down to that type of fidelity on the recommendation that's going to come to council. So that's going to take a little bit of time. We're anticipating 30, 60 days. We'll have, you know, a very realistic and impactful IMP recommendation to bring to council, and until then, we're just asking for this action to be considered so we continue to progress forward while we are putting that new plan in place.
Yeah, so Neiman, you're saying by April? We're talking April?
Yes, sir.
March, April. And Councilman, let me just add to what Neiman said, so you know that we're presenting quarterly briefings to the council. Every quarter, we show you the impact of the IMP or the update on the IMP. It's been very, we've been providing a lot of information. What we know is we're behind, and when we hired Ernesto, one of the first things that I told him is that one of the key responsibilities is going to be getting us back on track and figuring out a recovery plan, and that's what he's doing. So this is part of that work. This is really the recovery plan, it's one step of the recovery plan to, to, we can do the work, we could do the work, we built streets from nothing, so we can do this, but we're still going to be behind if we do it. So the point here is, let's get this done by the private sector, kind of staff augment, and then we can continue to do the work. The goal is to catch up, and the goal is that on October 1, that's when we begin that year's program, not the year and a half ago's program. Ernesto knows that. Leadership is what matters, and so we have a great leader now in Public Works, and this is all part of that step. As Neiman said, April is when we'll come back with the revised IMP.
Okay, so I'm assuming the end of April?
April sometime, yeah.
Okay, so I want to make sure this is really clear, right? The number one priority, the number one complaint we all get is streets.
We know it.
Okay? Residential streets being number one. So I want to make sure that you keep us informed as much as possible about what's happening here, because this is, I'm very uncomfortable about this whole situation.
Okay.
And so, so I want to reprioritize this, right? Streets, you know, it's streets.
Right, we know-
I'll say it again, streets, okay?
Yeah, that's why we just briefed you recently on the status of the IMP.
With that, I make a motion to approve- With that, I make a motion to approve item eight and nine.
We've got comments, but yes, I'm gonna reiterate, every person on this council has streets as number one, most especially residential. Councilman Roy.
So my question, I want to go back to number eight for a moment. If I understand what you're saying is that you originally had basically two different separate companies, and then you decided, you know what, based on experience that you had, that it's better to use one so that they can repair both the roads as well as the other infrastructure while they're working on it?
I think that's right. I, I think, so Public Works conceived of that, they, they thought, we're gonna focus on the road, we'll give the list to utilities, and they can take care of their work ahead of our road construction. And we found in practice that coordination is a bit of a challenge, and it really makes sense to put all that work in, in one contract.
So my only question on that is, in the future, are you gonna adopt this as a best practice?
Yes, sir.
And, okay, so that we don't go back and, or are there any other projects right now that you may be coming back to us and saying, okay, we need to be able to merge these because they're separate right now?
I, I can't think of any. I, I think going forward, it's gonna be included in one bid set.
Okay, so I, I just wanted to make sure of that, because I didn't want, three months later, then we're back here talking about merging these things again. The other thing I wanted to talk about is on, on question number nine, is that, and we've talked a lot about it, so I don't want to belabor the point, but if I understand, because I've had a lot of people, again, streets being such a high visible thing, that have called me up, and I tell them to go on to the website and look to see if they can see where they're at with their street, right? But if I understand this right, 2021, the information for 2021 really isn't on there. They can look up 2022, 2023, correct?
No, 21 is on there, sir.
Yeah, is it?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, 2021 is on there, Councilman. In fact, what we've done in recent times, as I mentioned, we do quarterly reports to the, to the council, where we put the date of estimated completion. So all of the 2021, 2022, and 2023, the, the district, the project name, the start date, and the expected completion date, all that's on there.
Okay, yes, sir. All right, I'll have to go back, because I was working with the Assistant City Manager, and we were talking about the 2021 list. I need to go back and delve into a couple of things on that.
Yes, sir.
Um, I, I want to make sure, though, if, if we could, and I guess I worm ahead with this, if they go onto that website, if there's something that, if we know we're behind, or if we know that there's a certain timeframe in which we really are trying to catch up, I think if we could put a little notice there or something, anything that we can do to communicate to the people effectively so that, you know, we can cut down on some of those phone calls, or just let them know that we're thinking about them and we're admitting. I think it's a lot better sometimes to come forward and say, okay, yes, we know where we're at, we know what our shortfalls are, and this is what we're doing in terms of working on it, than them hearing it up here and then we're all trying to just bring it out and, and figure it out. So that, that's my only recommendation on that.
Yes, sir. We can do that.
Okay.
Oh, and by the way, I never, a couple councils ago, I, I was asking about, because we did talk about this, in terms of repairing streets, I wanted to see a list of how many, of how much hot mix you used in the past and your cold, in, in terms of patching, because we had talked about that. I never got that.
Yes, sir. I'm sorry, sir. We sent a memo detailing those, those requests for information that you all had regarding the streets. And correct, don't quote me on this, but we believe that 78% of the roadways were made, were repaired with hot mix versus cold mix.
Okay, can you send that to me again? I don't recall getting that. Thank you.
And in addition, also in that memo, just for council's situation awareness, it also states how much money is saved by pursuing in-house projects versus contracting. So we, we really did a whole lot of research into ensuring.
Okay. Yeah, I'm just curious, number one, did that hot mix hold up a lot better than the cold mix anyway?
Yeah, it does.
We can go back and do a sample of those streets.
Yes, sir.
And know that, but anyway.
Yeah, hot mix definitely stands up better, Councilman.
Yeah, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you. Councilman Klein.
Uh, yeah, I still talked to Ernie and Jeff about this yesterday already. I appreciate you guys getting back to me about that with the information. Something I didn't ask, I, I just didn't think about it at the time. Maybe you can't answer this either. It, we're, I'm talking about item number nine here, actually. Moving these 11 streets over to Haas Anderson now, opposed to doing the main house, and the goal is to try to get those streets completed faster, repaired faster, which I think is laudable. My wonder, my question, I guess, now is, is, does the contractor, Haas Anderson, do they have the capacity to handle those additional 11 streets 25% above what they were contracted for before, labor and, and equipment as well? Because I don't want the streets to be torn up and then be sitting there for several months, or maybe more than a year before they get repaired.
Yes, sir. The, and Haas Anderson is a, or Anderson Columbia, they go by now, they are a very capable contractor. And, you know, these are guys that'll do $50 million-plus contracts with Tech Dot. So this was a $10 million contract, we're adding $2.5 million roughly to it. So yes, they have the capacity to do it. And what we are doing, if this is approved today, we're gonna prioritize these 11 streets ahead of some of the work that was originally to be done under that contract, just following the principle of first in, first out. You know, these are some of the older streets in our inventory, we're trying to get them done as quickly as possible. So the, the idea, we're, we're raising that contract value up to the maximum we can under the law. They're gonna honor the unit prices on their bid to do this work, and then we're gonna try and bring back in as much of the original work as, as possible, but some of it might go to a future contract.
Okay, thank you. Thanks, guys.
Uh, Councilman Pusley.
Thank you, Mayor. So, Neiman, as you, as you and Ernie and everybody went through the IMP plan, and you've, pared it out, these 11 streets as being the most critical that you need to get done at this time, is that, is that pretty much?
Yes, sir. Well, it's, it's not the ones that need, it's not based off of what needs to be done at this time, it's like Jeff has stated, a first in, first out. Our number one priority is closing out fiscal year 21 and getting us back on our public timeframe.
Okay, so, so my question is, are these the only 11 who fit that category, or do we have others? Or have you looked that deep into the IMP plan to determine that?
I, I would say these are the last 11. We've had others that we've had to do some concrete work on with contractors, and we've used some of our other IDIQ contracts to get that done, but these are the last of the FY21 program.
Okay. So we, we shouldn't see this again, then?
Not for the 21.
Not for the 21 program.
No, sir.
But as you look forward, do you perceive this is gonna be an issue for other streets in the program for 2022?
No, sir. As, no, sir, as I stated before, Public Works staff, and with Ernie on board, he's putting a new set of eyes on the current IMP, and there's work being done to put together a revised plan that's gonna be coming to, coming to council in April. And once that, uh, once, if and once that plan is approved, then we highly anticipate that that's going to be the schedule that's maintained, and basically no surprises or no additional streets that are under scoped.
Well, and I'll underscore what's been said here before, it's important for us to keep the, the IMP plan up to date as far as being able to look at it when, when constituents call me and say, what about my street? That's the first thing I go to. And I also wanted to ask, where are we at on, we were gonna try to get our bond programs added to that IMP.
Added, right, that map was updated.
It's on the website, sir.
Yeah, it's on the website, Councilman. So before, you could go to the website to see where the bond program projects were. I think you recommended that Councilman to put the IMP on as well.
Right.
We consolidated both maps into one interactive map.
So it is on there now.
It's been on there for a while.
Yeah, if you go on the IMP website, you'll see three different options, what on identifying, the IMP streets that's identified for the fiscal year. Then there's, one, one of the buttons is actually a combination of all street work that's being conducted in the city. That includes the IMP and the bond, so citizens have access to.
And then a separate one for the bond only.
Yes, sir.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
Councilman Suckley.
Thank you, Mayor. Touching on a lot of the things that have already been said, but again, Ernie and Jeff, appreciate your time over the weekend and making yourselves available to communicate with us. Obviously, kind of changing some of the best practices of moving some of the utility engineering outside is one big change, and then also using a contractor instead of doing some of the stuff in-house. Those are big changes. But some of my main concerns were kind of robbing Peter to pay Paul in terms of the budget, trying to figure out what the dollars were gonna look like. So to Councilman Hernandez's comment about the agenda and the packages going forward, I would appreciate more, more information on all the moving pieces of dollars here and dollars here, and all the different programs, and better understanding what the long-term implications are gonna be for council going forward, trying to figure out what dollars are gonna be spent. Thank you.
Okay. Uh, Councilwoman Campos.
Thank you. Thank you so much. And thank you, Councilman Hernandez, for bringing this up. Yes, it all, I think most of us ran on the, on the platform of our streets, so this is a very important issue. And thank you again for, for working those late nights and, and weekends to try to get us back on track. And I think that's what I'm hearing, that what you're asking for today is, you're asking to put it back on track. Is that correct?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. And as far as, you know, the, the residents, you know, one of the things that I look at is, is my street, you know, listed on any list, right? I mean, I just like, okay, I pray, you know, when somebody calls me or, or texts me or emails me about a street, I'm like, okay, let's look at it. And so far, it's been one and one. One, they're not, and the other one was, yes, it's still there, and, and I'm grateful for that. So it is helpful, and I'm looking forward to the next batch of streets. And when again will that be? That, that you'll determine?
In April.
April.
Okay. So, everybody, April, so fingers crossed that your, your street is, is on that list. Thank you.
Okay, I think that's all the questions. Thank you. Thank you for the presentation, gentlemen. So we have a motion.
I'm sorry.
Well, I think we do have a motion. Do you want to do the second?
A second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye. And this is for, did you say?
Eight and nine.
Eight and nine, okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. The motion carries. Section K, which is our public hearings, item 11, that is, case number 012301, Bella Holdings LLC in District 2, or better known as Bien Marite.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Nina Nixon-Mendas, Assistant Director of Development Services. The rezoning case before you is case number 0123-01. The applicant is Bella Holdings LLC, and the property is located at 3104 and 3118 South Alameda Street. The rezoning request is from the ON Neighborhood Office District to the CN1 Neighborhood Commercial District.
Motion to approve.
Okay, so we're gonna go ahead and open public comment. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to make a comment on item number 11? Okay, there being no one, I'll put, close public hearing. We have a motion, and we have a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. The motion carries. We'll go to section, which is, oh, we're gonna recess to the corporation meeting. So I'll go ahead and recess council meeting to hold the annual board meeting of the Corpus Christi Housing Finance Corporation, and Councilmember Hunter will preside.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll call this meeting to order, and Ms. Huerta, could you please call the roll?
President Michael Hunter.
Here.
Vice President Roland Barrera.
Here.
Members Sylvia Campos.
Here.
Palette Wajardo.
Present.
Gil Hernandez.
Here.
Jim Klein.
Here.
Mike Pusley.
Here.
Everett Roy.
Present.
Dan Suckley.
Here.
Okay, we do have a quorum of the board president to conduct the meeting.
Thank you, Ms. Huerta. I know we have a giant public comment line waiting, but is there anyone here that would like to make public comment?
Chief Markle is. And Leighton.
If not, is there anyone that would like to make a motion to approve the minutes?
Move.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
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 And we don't have an action required on the treasurer's report.
But we do have, Ms. Hurlbert is here to present, if, if you like.
Actually, we do not have a treasurer's report today.
Oh, my apologies, sorry.
It's okay.
Thank you. All right, so now we're doing elections for the officers, correct? And let's see, are there any recommendations or nominations for officers?
There's two offices.
President and vice president, sorry, specifically.
I'd like to nominate President Hunter, Vice President, resume his position.
Continue.
And I'd like to nominate Vice President Roland Barrera.
Okay. Okay.
All those in favor, say aye.
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 All those against? All right, smart choice. For the remaining offices, we have to appoint our staff members as general manager, assistant general manager, secretary, treasurer, and assistant treasurer, as Petersenoni, Constance Sanchez, Rebecca Huerta, Heather Hurlbert, and Judy Vialong. All right, I'll get it, sorry. Any nominations? I mean, sorry, any?
So that's the slate, if there's a, if the, if the board would accept that slate, the motion and the second.
Any firsts or seconds? Motion, sorry.
I will motion to approve.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
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 All those against? Thank you. All right. So we have a resolution amending and reaffirming the investment policy and investment strategy for the Corpus Christi Housing Finance Corporation. Ms. Hurlbert?
Yes, Heather Hurlbert, Director, or actually Treasurer. The corporation utilizes the same investment policy as the city, which has to be reaffirmed on an annual basis. There were a few changes to the investment policy and strategy, primarily the name of the annual comprehensive, annual report was updated to reflect the new nomenclature that's being used by GFOA. There were a few changes, just administrative changes, on the wording for investments with, within the local government pools. And then there was some updated language as far as how many bids are required. as far as how many bids are required. We had required at least three bids, but in our environment, in our current market environment, with the interest rates changing so quickly, it was challenging at times to get three. And so we changed that to two or more, to allow for at least two bids. And so those are the substantive changes within the policy.
I'd like to make a motion to approve.
Second.
Unless there is any question, sorry, sorry, one second. Ms. Campos.
Oh, that light was on, yeah.
We have a motion in a second. All those in favor say aye.
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 Any against? Thank you. Now we have a resolution with respect to the issuance of bonds to finance facilities for Greenwood Manor Limited Partnership, commonly referred to as Alma at Greenwood.
Thank you.
Presentation.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. I'm Linda Stewart. I'm the Neighborhood Services Director here in Corpus Christi. I'm presenting today on the portion of item number 12 related to the Corpus Christi Housing Finance Corporation, consideration of an inducement resolution for one, for $17,625,000 in multifamily housing revenue bonds for a new 152-unit affordable housing multifamily development at Greenwood Drive and Galahad Road. With me today to help field questions is Neighborhood Services Assistant Director Jennifer Buxton. Also in the audience today is Michael Shackelford and Jose Gonzalez from Adelante. They can address any specific questions about the proposed development. And we expect to have Mr. Bell, Mr. John Bell arrive any moment to, is he here now?
He is.
Oh, he's here. It's magic. So Mr. John Bell is also here. He's the attorney for the Housing Finance Corporation, and will be presenting on the bond transaction itself. Mr. Bell's also an attorney at Wood, Boykin, and Walter. At this point, I will step aside. Mr. Bell will come on, and I'll take over on slide six.
I apologize for causing more excitement than it was worth, but you moved quickly through your agenda, and I congratulate you on that. That's awesome. I know, I am always impressed.
He's represented me in the past in anxiety.
But we actually went through this process a couple of years ago. But for the new members in the council, and for those of you who were on it before, just like to remind you of the structure of these proposed bond financings. The Corpus Christi Housing Finance Corporation will actually issue bonds to a particular lender that will be recruited by the developer or the borrower, the user. And the loan terms will basically be negotiated between the lender and the borrower user. But because we have the ability to issue tax-exempt debt, we will issue the bonds for this particular project, and then loan the monies to the borrower user. At that point, we transfer all of the loan documents to a trustee, a corporate trustee, whose responsibility will be to collect the loan payments from the borrower and pay them to the bondholder. The Corpus Christi Housing Finance Corporation has no liability for these bonds, other than the pledge of the revenues from this particular project. It's a nonrecourse obligation of this entity. And the city of Corpus Christi, of course, has no responsibility for it either, no taxes or any other assets or pledge to support these bonds. As you learn from your financial report, you have a few hundred thousand dollars in the bank. Those are not at all at risk for this particular project. It's solely a financing between the lender and the particular user developing the project. If there is a default, the corporate trustee handles that default solely against the assets of the borrower user doing the project. Next slide, please. This particular project is Greenwood Manor Limited Partnership. It's a Texas Limited Partnership. If these particular bonds are approved, the Corpus Christi Housing Finance Corporation likely will be asked to provide a limited liability company subsidiary that will step in and serve as the general partner in order to make the overall structure work. It's a little premature to do that at this point. We have done this twice before in the history of this organization for the Costa Teragona Apartments, Phase One and Phase Two, that are located at North Padre Island Drive and I-37. The project Phase One was done in 2005, and Phase Two was done in 2011. And again, in that project, all we did was facilitate the financing through the issuance of bonds. And we also facilitated the structure of it for certain property tax benefits by being the general partner of the limited partnership. But we again have no liability under that scenario, because it's a zero asset general partner. The only asset is the asset in the, in the project structure. And so there's no, no liability there. But the CCHFC also will probably be requested to, and I guess that's the next slide, sorry about that, to be the landlord of the ground. And it'll be leased on a long-term land lease to the developer in order to facilitate those tax advantages. And I see the next slide isn't up, but that's my technical issue, I suspect. But nevertheless, it's a somewhat complicated structure. Somebody came up with this plan years ago. We've done it a few times. They do it in other cities regularly. It is able, it, it allows the city to get multifamily affordable housing in areas that are sometimes difficult to serve. When we did the Costa Teragona project, there was nothing anywhere remotely in that area, North Padre Island Drive and I-37. This is a site that's located on Greenwood that has been vacant land forever. And it's a big donut hole in the middle of the west side of undeveloped land that could, is dying for development. And high-quality, affordable multifamily housing would arguably be a good choice. But that's what you guys do to make the policy decisions. But this legal structure allows the developer certain benefits that they can't get otherwise. And it can be done so without putting this city of Corpus Christi, or even the Corpus Christi Housing Finance Corporation, at any financial risk on the project. It's, and in fact, the Corpus Christi Housing Finance Corporation generates some revenues. The $400,000 you have in the bank all came from the Costa Teragona project over the years. In fact, we've received probably over a million and a half dollars over the last 15 years from that project. It's been expended for various and different things by the Housing Finance Corporation over the years. And it just helps you provide an extra amount, a little bit of resources for other housing programs. I believe that, I want to see one more slide. You'll be completely insured on all the policies. Our limited liability company will be a single asset limited liability company solely owning a 1% interest in the project. They have a property management company that runs everything, that handles all the tenant issues. Over the last 15 years, some tenant once got my name as being the representative of the Corpus Christi Housing Finance Corporation, but I quickly directed them to the proper management corporate company to take care of their issues. If we issue the revenue bonds, our liability is solely limited to the pledge of the revenues received from the borrower. And of course, the city of Corpus Christi has no liability on this, because you're wearing your hats as the Corpus Christi Housing Finance Corporation today. I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Councilman Pestley.
Okay, this may be way ahead of the game, but I, I want to ask this question, and we can defer this later. In, in looking at this plat, this is a large apartment complex, and it looks to me like there's only one way in and one way out of this development the way it's laid out here where we were. And I know it's very diagrammatic, what we have received. But Greenwood is already a really busy street, and you're, this project is going to be at the intersection of Greenwood and, and what is it?
Galahad.
Yeah. Galahad, and plus, what is it, Military Highway that comes in, intersects there as well. So I, I just, I have real concern about how they're going to ingress and egress this property. And John, I know that has nothing to do with what you're here for.
Correct.
I apologize for that.
And, and, and just for perspective, doing a development project of this nature has a lot of different balls in the air.
Yeah.
And, and plating is clearly is one of the-
Well, I didn't, I didn't know when and where to ask this question, but I just wanted to go on record saying I have a concern about this, and how it's going to impact the existing traffic in that area.
Right.
Because it's a very busy area already.
If, if I may, when Linda comes back up, and she's next, we are going to show a slide of the site plan, but as you're asking, there is a gate off Sycamore as well. And I believe, and the developer can speak to this more, but there are traffic improvements scheduled for the West Point entrance.
Yeah, I said Military. I meant West Point.
I, I knew what you meant.
Same, same, same Army, yeah.
It's true.
So, and, and the developer can speak to that, can speak to that further. But there are two points of entrance, both off, one off Greenwood, and then one leading to Sycamore Place.
Okay.
Your question raises a very good point, though, Councilmember Pestley, in that your action today as the Housing Finance Corporation has zero impact on the dozen other issues that need to be addressed by any developer, plating, zoning, building permitting. I remember in the Costa Teragona one project, I was called one time by saying, well, we're having an issue getting our building permits issued. I mean, after all, the CCHFC as the general partner of this deal, doesn't that get us any stroke over at Development Services? And I explained to them, no. All we did was facilitate the financing of the project.
Right.
It has to satisfy every other issue that is out there, so far as all permitting and everything else, in order to make the project go. So for your decision focus today can take, you obviously have the flexibility to consider whatever factors you deem relevant. But for this, we're only looking at this one step, as to whether or not you're willing to facilitate the financing because of its location and other issues that you might deem appropriate on a policy basis.
Yeah, that, and that's the difficult place I find myself, is the decision that I make here is going to have an impact on the decision we will make as city council members, and not members of this particular body. So they're two different entities, but I, I just thought it was fair to ask the question, because I think it is going to be a real concern. And, and we have to be cognizant of that. We have to be cognizant of the fact, how does our fire department get in and service this facility if there's an emergency of some type? And so, anyway, thank you very much.
Yeah. And, and historically, this board has approved projects that never happened because of other issues that were just fatal flaws that-
Right.
Didn't allow them to happen.
Right. Thank you, Mr. Bell.
Thank you.
And yes, for clarity, this, all of that part of the development will be addressed at a later time. This is just the first step, as you explained it very well. No liability, this is just to move it forward, so that we can get some of these things addressed and, as they go through the process. So that said, I'm going to go ahead and let, who's going to speak?
Linda.
What?
Mayor, I do have a question for John.
I know. Wait, we're going to, just one second. We've got a couple of lights on here. But I wanted, I think, I think you guys wanted to make comment as well. Just the middle, yeah.
Sure. Thank you. Jose Gonzalez, Adelante Development. And thank you, Councilman, for raising that question. And I think it's important that we address the issues that could impact the community. We, at the city's request, this project is actually in review by Development Services for the issuance of a building permit. So the plans and everything have, are going through. As part of that discussion, we're spending $410,000 to re, to address traffic pattern concerns and traffic at the West Point-Greenwood intersection, to the extent that the current configuration only has three traffic light arms, if you want to call it. So we will be installing a fourth arm to, to facilitate the ingress-egress from the site. We have a gate at Blackjack and Sycamore that can be used by emergency services and the fire department and that. The city has asked us not to really look at that as a, an access point for the residents to not create a lot of additional traffic within the actual subdivision area. And so, so we, you know, so we've, you know, looked to address, you know, Greenwood as the primary ingress-egress for the development.
I sincerely appreciate that. It's, as I said, very important. And, and I would agree with staff's recommendation about not making the backside of that a permanent, because you're going to impact everybody that's already there.
Yeah.
Okay. Councilman Barrera?
Well, I just, number one, I, I want, well, I tell you what, I'm going to reserve my right till after Linda's done.
Okay. And Councilman Hernandez, do you want to make a comment now?
Yes, yes, please. This is the third time this has come to us. And so I'm curious as to what the delay is and why we, this is, I mean, what's, what's happening to have this come to us a third time, right? So, I mean, what's the delay?
Yes, sir. So, so you're correct. This is the, the third request for an inducement resolution for this particular project. While those inducement resolutions were granted, the economic climate didn't really support proceeding with the project, and the developer can speak more to those challenges.
Right. Can I just add to that, that the city, the staff, we're not causing any of the delay. It's the developer's financial portfolio, just to put that on record. But Jose, can you tell us what, yes, sir?
Sure. And thank you, Mr. Zanoni. With, I'm getting too much into the weeds, but, but certainly-
There's no problem with the weeds with me.
Good, good. You know, I'm glad to have this conversation. So when you use private activity taxes and bonds, there is, this is the only way that we can access the 4% low-income housing tax credit. Y'all have, have addressed 9% low-income housing tax credits at, at your last meeting. And, and that is a competitive process that, that the state opens up for applications every year. If we want to use a tax credit that still is a tool to address affordable and workforce housing, we have to use the 4% credit. But we can only access the 4% credit when we use bonds. One of the requirements of using the bonds is that 50% of your land costs and eligible project development costs have to be funded with the bonds. The Texas Bond Review Board, based on population, sets a dollar amount every year that is the regional allocation of tax-exempt bonds. Corpus, as you know, is in Region 10. It also, there's also Victoria and Kingsville that are in the same regional area. And from 2021 to 2022, the amount of bond that you could apply for in that January 1st to March 1st timeframe dropped from about close to 21 million to 15,888,000 in our last inducement that we applied for, from y'all. And the combination of materials cost increases, you know, just all the costs related to the construction, we found ourselves that we could not meet the 50% test, because our total project costs had risen at that, you know, particular point in time. So the only thing that we could do is to give the bonds back. And, and, and then take a step back and reapply. This year, the amount of bond available for Region 10 was increased to this 17,600, it's actually 17,627,000 and change. So, so a combination of materials costs coming down, some things that our general contractor, some changes that he's made, that having an increased amount of bond that we can apply for allows us to meet the 50% test.
Okay. So it's just basically the cost didn't work out, so you have to do this again.
Correct.
So this is, like I said, the third time.
Right. And what happens, no, and I understand. I mean, I'm sure that it's tedious, you know, to kind of look at this. But, but the same, but one of the things also is, is that, and we, when we first approached the city council, was that the allocations of bonds sit within the region from January 1st to March 1st. And for a number of years, nobody applied for private activity bond within Region 10. And, and so, so what we're trying to take advantage of is to capture the 17 million at this point in time before March 1st. And, and, and for, the, the whole private activity bond as a, as a tax-exempt bond as a tool, the, the Bond Review Board is so massively oversubscribed. It's probably oversubscribed five times to one right now, that once you lose the, the reservation out of the region, for us to go and get in line, because now, once, once what's called the first collapse is that all the bonds in all the regions that are not used go into a pot, and everybody who's waiting in line receives an allocation out of the pot. For us to, to not try to apply for it while it was at the region, our chances of getting an allocation in 2023 is nil. You know, we would not be able to do it. So, so I, I, you know, recognize and apologize for the delays in sort of getting the project done. But once you give the, the bonds back, you're really forcing yourself to have to sit out a year and then reapply to the, to January, when the bonds are available at the region.
Okay, thank you. And I, I just want to clarify something he said, that I don't, and maybe something John had mentioned. Was that the Fish Pond project that, no, so they didn't use this? They, they still use the 4% program, but they didn't use this, right?
That's correct.
That is correct.
Okay, so-
There are some statewide issuers that receive their own allocation, that you can go to, and they have the statutory ability to issue the bonds within municipal jurisdictions. And that's what Fish Pond did in their case.
Okay. Might want to get a little bit more information on how the 4% tax credit program works for us, so we can understand the various mechanisms that we could use for this. Because if we're not utilizing it to his, to his point, maybe that we should take a closer look at that, to try and incentivize people to come and, come and do something similar. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Hernandez. And I'm not going to get the reputation of having my meetings drawn on, so if you have any questions or answers-
so if you have any questions or answers, make them quick. One, I am going to ask everyone who is on our non-president or vice president to contact Mr. Hernandez within two weeks before voting on anything. Thank you.
I thought you were going after the presentation. Okay. Whatever, whatever your choice, Mr. Vice President.
All right, thank you. This will go really fast. So here on slide six are basic details about the Alma at Greenwood project. And again, we are available to answer specific questions if, if you have them. This was in your, your review packet. And then, see, here's an aerial photo on slide seven of the proposed location in the general area of Galahar and, and Greenwood. We talked a little bit about the access improvements that were going to be required. And there's the elevation. And, and you can see that Moody Park is located to the east of the project with some access off Greenwood. But again, that was talked about earlier in terms of improvements. And that is the final slide, and we are ready to address questions.
Thank you. Councilmember Barrera.
Okay, and I just want to make some comments, first off, and I hope Counselperson Campos, because I'm going to... We, we grew up in that area. And so I can tell you unequivocally, it was, it's, it's never been developed. So, of course, I only go back 56 years, I know Sylvia goes back about 30. So, you know, I actually would, would ride my bike through that area to get to the ball fields there at Universal and International, to get to the boys' club, to swim at, back then, which was called the Greenwood Pool, now it's got to be a park. I, I'm looking forward to some traffic problems because simply, in addition, this is part of the west side area development plan to incorporate multifamily housing into this. So I want to thank the developer for their persistency, you know, coming back a third time. You know, I can't, I can't tell you how much I appreciate it. I know personally as a, somebody with, you know, a link or, what is it, culture from that area, you know, it's, it's, I don't think there's anything else that would probably take that opportunity. And so that, that area needs obviously much more development. And I think, you know, this brings a great opportunity. Walking distance to Garcia Elementary, walking distance to Moody High School. I mean, it's, it's a perfect location. So thank you for your persistency, and I want to thank staff for their diligence in putting this all together. Thank you, John Bell, for offering your expertise. So with that, I'd like to move for approval.
The mayor has a...
Quick, quick comment, and we're done, and, and mine is very positive. I just want to remind everyone, all these issues are extremely important, and they are a responsibility to address. But, but I want to make certain that we remember that a project like this stabilizes families, and it provides housing, and makes housing attainable for those that are making a $7.25 wage to a $15 wage. And, and that is extremely difficult. So, so, you know, moving forward, and, you know, we should always have a strong focus on affordable workforce housing because it isn't easy. It is not easy to, to attain. And, and there are a lot of people who are working for those wages, between $7 and $15, $16 an hour. So this is a wonderful project, and I would just like for everyone to remember that because this is, this is a huge, huge step forward. 152 units that are going to supply much more than an apartment for a family. They're going to provide a home, and they're going to truly provide a path for families that will, it'll change them forever. So, thank you. Thank you for all the work you've, you've all done. Thank you for your advocacy, especially in, in your district, and for the council's support.
Thank you, Mayor. And since Councilmember Pusley brought up the greatest point, because I agree with it, when it comes to traffic congestion, he gets to talk again.
Thank you, and I'll be brief. I, and I just want to throw this out there, you talked about having an exit onto Blackjack, is that what the name of the street is?
Yes.
Okay. Why would you not connect to Delgado Street, which is more of a collector's street? Blackjack is a neighborhood street, and all you're going to do is divert that traffic down Sycamore, which is through a neighborhood. It seems to me like connecting to Delgado gives you multiple points of entry and exit, and also puts you onto a collector's street versus a neighborhood street. You see what I'm talking about?
Sure, sure.
So I would just ask that you look at that carefully because what we don't want is diverting, you know, hundreds of traffic count and through a neighborhood that exists there today. And our neighborhood streets already have significant challenges with respect to payment overuse as it is. But I think that would provide better access and for ingress and egress to this development. And I agree, Mayor, this is a great project, and I have nothing against the project. But we also have to make sure this doesn't impact the people who already live there and who are invested there and have been invested there a long time.
Right, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Pusley. And I'd like to say I was a west side pony baseball player. I, I'm very excited to see this. And Corpus Christi studs would have probably performed a lot better with this development next to it. I also would like to, not necessarily a motion of direction, but just to express my ideas, what I mentioned earlier, I do mean. I would like that to be handed, that opportunity to be given to all the council members, Mr. General Manager Zanoni. Is that everyone is contacted at least two weeks prior before this reaches this, before we have our meeting. That's all. And we have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
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 Any against? And with that, this meeting is adjourned, thank you.
Right. Thank you, Councilman. Okay, I'll go ahead and reconvene our council meeting to go ahead and adjourn our council meeting because we have no further business, so thank you.